We're going to call the meeting to order.
No, we're not.
I mean, we're gonna have a-.
Before we call the meeting to order, if anybody would like to join us in order of prayer, you can stand with us, please.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing tonight on this board and then our wonderful people that have come, our staff, and we ask your guidance in all that we do through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
This time we'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask Ms. Boddenley to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna say, we're gonna have a change in the agenda.
We're going to make a change in our agenda tonight and we're going to have election of officers for the board.
At this time, I'd like to take nominations for the chair, please.
I'd like to nominate Amy Boddenley for chair.
Any other nominations?
And Ms. Susan Irwin for vice chair.
Do we need a second on that?
Well, first, are there any other nominations for a position of chair? Any other nominations for the position of vice chair? Hearing none, is there a motion that those nominees be elected by acclamation?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of that motion signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Congratulations, you have office.
Public comments.
Okay, so we're gonna open with any public comments, anyone have a public comment that they would like to make at this time? With that, let us know. Okay, so now we need to approval on the agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. And we need approval on the minutes from the November 13th meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor, raise your right hand. So now I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, ma'am, there you go. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Boddenley, and I'd like to, I got a few things to do tonight. I'd like to welcome, we got two new members here tonight, Ms. Donna Ray and Ms. Amy Boddenley who's re-elected this past election, and just like to welcome you here. I got a little present for you today. Sarah Dalton, the marketing coordinator from the Blue Ridge Development Center, sent these over for you guys. It's got the new Allegheny logo on it and her business cards in there, the website, and so, both on the board. That being said, also, Ms. Ray, would you, do you want to use your own device or do you want us to provide a device for you?
It doesn't matter.
We'll do it either way.
I have one.
I mean, we'll provide it, it's Chromebook.
That would be fine.
We'll do that, we'll do that, we'll get that set up, we've got your email set up, everything ready to go.
Okay.
I'll get Ms. Clark to take care of that and we'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Get it to you, okay? All right, perfect, 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 perfect. All right, we're gonna first recognize our Christmas card winners and yeah, and while we're saying that, I'll show you a copy of our Christmas card that's going out this year. There you go. And we've got five winners this year. We're gonna start out with fifth place, and with this, we have a little gift card in Subway, so you can go out and eat, store yourself, but our, pull this off here, our fifth place winner is Ms. Alex Bar. Is Alex here? No, not tonight, so maybe that's a shot of Alex's, I'll put that to the side. Alex is Lake Creek, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, Sparta, sorry. Sharon, did you add that on there?
Yes.
You did, I apologize, I'm not reading very well, I'm a night guy. Okay. Our fourth place winner is Beth Cardwell? Is Beth here tonight? No, she didn't make it for Piney, okay, all right, we'll get that to Beth. Our third place winner is Kylie Weddington. Kylie, yay Kylie, come on up. This is Kylie's card, great card, I think that's on the inside of your notes on the outside. But we do have a certificate for you, for outstanding performance in our Christmas card contest winner. We gave you a few cards yourself, if you want to send those to some people, and also a gift card to Sparta, I mean Subway. Thank you, good job, congratulations.
Good job, Kylie.
Our second place winner is Cindy Lopez. Cindy's from Lake Creek, right? Cindy, for outstanding performance in our Christmas card contest winner. Here is Ms. Lopez's card, you guys. I'll give that to you, I'll give that to you, there's your cards and there's your gift card in Subway. Thank you.
That's very nice.
You want to put the clip back on there so you can see? Bob, you're amazing, okay. And our first place winner is, am I gonna say that right, Baggie Southern?
Thank you.
Baggie, thank you, Baggie, for outstanding performance in our Christmas card contest winner. This is her Christmas card. Great job, everybody done a wonderful job. Here is your gift card and some other cards. And I'm telling you, this, the, you know, we've been doing this every year and, I'll give you a clip for you. You guys, I promise you, I would've never won that contest, but you guys did a fantastic job. Can we get a picture for the newspaper, please? All right, come on ladies, come on. Get your, yeah.
You want to hold their certificates or their cards?
Either one, should do both.
Both?
Yes. What you doing right here? Yeah, come right here. Yeah, I like taking pictures.
I'll take it as you want.
I don't want to take a little picture.
Your picture.
How's that?
Just don't cover your face yet. No one sees your picture.
The cheese?
All right, one, two.
Mr. Long, will you encross? I gotta leave. One, two, three, that's it, thank you.
Y'all good? All right, great job ladies, thank you. Our next recognition is our Bright Ideas Grants. Y'all can stay if you want to. Thank y'all for coming, thank you, thank you, David.
You're gonna leave?
You what?
I said, you're gonna leave.
Yeah. I'm gonna call up our first award for the grant is from Allegheny High School, Jill Starling, you wanna come on?
She's mine.
I just want to say congratulations.
Thanks.
We had a, we did have a little ceremony out at Blue Ridge Energy a couple weeks ago with a nice dinner and recognition, but we did want to recognize you at the board tonight, we'll give that to you.
Thank you.
And maybe you can tell everybody about what you did and what your grant was?
So my grant is for occupational courses study, students there have to get 450 hours to graduate from our program at the high school, and we had a need come to us from the community saying that we needed to preserve our VHS tapes where we're losing those memories, and did I know of anyone? And I said, I don't know of anyone, and so we got researching, no one does it in our area, so we are, we are getting equipment with our money to train our students on how to do that, and eventually to put those DVDs that will transfer over to digital so that they can be preserved for future generations, and we're also gonna do it for like individuals as we grow in it.
So if you got any old VHS tapes?
Pretty much.
They will start doing that and it'll preserve some history. How much was your grant worth?
It was for a little over a thousand dollars.
Do you really want to?
Yeah, thank you all very much, thank you. Sherry? No, I ain't saying, okay. Sherry Maines was our winner out at Lake Creek, and Sherry's not even making it tonight. Cecilia Hampton, come on up, Cecilia, I know you like to speak in front of everybody, so. Sherry has been, excuse me, Sherry, Cecilia has been a winner for how many years now? Ten or twelve? We figured it out, ten years, ten years in a row.
Well, not in a row, but ten in all.
Ever since I've been here, you've won one, so. So tell us a little bit about your grant, you moved in.
This year I'm having to teach social studies and I really needed some historical fiction to help me with that, and so the grant is gonna buy some small sets of historical fiction to work with in units of study for social studies, plus materials to make it really come alive with some projects.
And your grant was worth how much?
A thousand, three hundred.
Yes, yes, thank you, good job. Last from our ladies, from Piney Creek, Maggie Murphy, come on up Maggie. I don't know if y'all seen the paper, but y'all's picture is in the paper, so. So tell us a little bit about your grant Maggie, and how much it was worth?
My grant was for six hundred and fifty dollars and it's to support the students' projects that they're working on right now in seventh and eighth grade, so our baby club is going to have our plant, a community garden, and that'll feed our community, or on our blessing box, that'll feed our students and other people that wanna come to the community. We're gonna have a dinner to raise food for our food drive, we're sending presents to soldiers for Christmas, we've got a lot, and I'm gonna talk about some of it when we talk about our plant.
Thank you so much. That's good. I will say this, at the, at the meal we had today in recognition, all four schools, first time I've been here, all four schools received a grant this year, and Blue Ridge Energy, there's a committee that recognizes these grant winners, and they said by far and away Allegheny County's grants were the best that they had throughout the whole system, and it's not just Allegheny County, it's Wilkes County, Sash County, it's all areas that Blue Ridge Energy serves, so you did a fantastic job with that, so, can I get a picture with all of y'all? I know you're putting your paper together.
With your certificate?
Yeah. You trying to tell a joke? Put it on there, Maggie. It's short, isn't it?
All right, ladies. Okay, Mr. Long. You are so long. One, two, three, to get a picture.
Right, thank you ladies, thank you. I look forward to coming and seeing that in progress, so thank y'all. All right, Carly Phipps, I'm gonna ask Carly Phipps to come to the podium and give us some good news for the high school, please.
We'll go back, go ahead Carly.
Hey y'all, I'm Carly Phipps and I'm from the high school and I'm a senior, and today I'd like to address the current happenings at the high school. Just last month, as you guys saw, we were named the Innovative School of the Month for our freshman seminar class. And this class has provided many advantages, some being disciplinary referrals are down by 50% and less students owe makeup time. The CTE teachers attended a STEM night at each elementary school to show the CTE classes that are available at the high school. This will allow growth of the CTE classes and produce more science and math motivated students. Mr. Reedy took his forensic science class to the Bonnie Farm at Western Carolina University, and this provides students with insight and understanding of the field of forensic science. At the agriculture department, they got involved in Trees for Troops. Through this program, around 400 local Christmas trees were sent to families on bases. The family and consumer science department have completed their annual fruit sale and those will be ready for pickup tomorrow, December 7th. Around 90 students took part with their work keys on Tuesday, and that is a test for all the CTE cluster completers to take to evaluate their knowledge in the said cluster. They started prepping for this weeks in advance, so hopefully those scores are good.
I'm sure they will.
Students can also buy their yearbooks for $61 in advance. And we received many grants, obviously the Bright Ideas Grant for $1,010 to convert the tapes to DVDs for the community, and we also got a $500 grant from ExxonMobil for science and math departments. Also, there are big things happening in sports. The football team made it to the second round state playoffs that were in Murphy, North Carolina, although the game did end in a loss, it was a season filled of many, many victories. And we are sad to see all the fall sports go, but we are excited that all the winter sports have started, including basketball and wrestling and swimming. Thank you to all the new and returning board members for your time and service.
Thank you Carly. Very well done, thank you, thank you. Mr. Bogdan, go back, I'm gonna back up, I know she did.
She really did.
I'm gonna let you recognize Innovative School, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. It's my honor to recognize Allegheny High School as the Innovative School of the Month for November. This fall, there was a new class at AHS, the freshman seminar. The class, which was a required class for all AHS 9th grade students, is a transitional course designed to support the needs of all freshmen. Basically, last year after studying some data from the first semester of the prior year, it became very evident to school leadership that 9th grade students were struggling with the responsibilities that come along with being a high school student. They had a collective need for social and emotional support and generally needed more guidance on all issues. Last spring, the AHS guidance department in conjunction with support from Appalachian State University's mental health team, developed a curriculum framework to address the specific needs of 9th grade students. As they gathered information to include in the curriculum, aspects that address the whole child were the focus. Class has been a huge success, with 9th graders getting the knowledge, support, and guidance they need to be successful, not just in high school, but life. And she mentioned some data, there is data to support that, that's the picture we took this morning also. Freshman discipline referrals diminished this fall from 40%, last year, last fall, it was 40% of the total referrals were freshmen. This year, so far, it's only 27%, so that's pretty significant, and overall referrals are down 50%. Freshman attendance, and I read these numbers today, last year at this time, it was 94.2%. This year, it's 95.4%, which that doesn't sound like much, but that's almost a point, and it's hard to get a point when you're that high anyway. And the big, the big thing is with that, is those kids that struggle to get to school, there's always a handful, that has really improved. We have, I think, last time I checked, there was one freshman that had makeup time, which is rare, so that, that has been very positive. Freshman seminars truly motivate, the next way to help our young students get off on the right foot in high school, and it provides them with all the support they need to be successful, so great job AHS, congratulations to them, and I actually presented to two of them yesterday, we had the snow, so I had to, got pulled out of that a little bit, but I'm very impressed with what's going on at there, and they've been bringing speakers in, it's, in my opinion, one of the best things we've done at the high school in a while, so it's excellent.
I think it's a great idea because I knew last year, when they're at the elementary school, they get, they're kinda cuddled and loved, and they have that small area, and then you go up here and they're going, wow, so I love that, I'm glad it's working great.
I think it's, it is excellent. Any, you got any questions for me or anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bogdan. And tonight, Piney Creek School is gonna share good news, and the young lady supposed to be here tonight is actually playing basketball, so we have a video recording over that we can, that we can listen, so, it's Ms. Phoebe Murphy.
Oh, hey little lady. I apologize that I couldn't be with you, I'm driving basketball and for which tonight, so I decided to present through a video. It's difficult to tell you all the amazing things going on in such a short amount of time, but I will highlight a few for each grade. The pre-teen students are really coming together as a school family. In fact, several times a week, they sing the song "We Are a Family" while using sign language. This helps our youngest learners remember that they are here to love and care for each other. They are also learning how to solve social problems when they have a conflict. When Mr. Daniel was upset about not being able to find something in the classroom one day, they reminded her that the first thing she needed to do was take a deep breath and relax. Partners are learning how to be kind and helpful members of the family. They are reading Joy Callie stories and laughing and learning side words, and for the holidays, are comparing and contrasting holiday stories like the gingerbread man. In Caleb Phipps's first grade class, students are rocking narrative writing. The class is learning how to use different kinds of thinking maps to organize their ideas. They are then taking the information and turning it into well-written narrative pieces. Students are excited to use the online story-making website and the Storybird to make their stories come to life. At the end of every day, Miss Turner is using Hill Draft, which is a tier-three intervention with two second grade students and two first grade students. She has, she has seen growth in not only their reading ability, but also their confidence. Four students who used this very complaint about reading now jump up and down with excitement when it's their turn to read. This extremely successful program is possible because Ms. Lewis is willing to take the rest apart in our class while the other kids are reading. We love that Piney Creek, we all work together to ensure the success of every student. Third graders focusing on kindness this holiday season. Each day, the kindness self brings a new kindness challenge for the class to complete. Third graders are also working to master multiplication and division and are using tons of fun games to do so. They are also making thinking maps in ELA to conquer each standard. Fourth grade has loved both their fun day experiences and have learned so much. They're currently working on their acts of kindness for their bulletin board, which ties in with our character education throughout the school. Fifth and sixth graders are reading and writing like crazy. They have completed posters and essays for so long while also reading amazing novels like "To Everlasting." In Ms. Murphy's class, we began reading "Wonder" by R.J. Felicio, and it has changed our perspective online. We started acts of kindness as we have, as we read and have over 1,000, because the main character, August, told us to choose kindness. From there, we began service projects that address sustainable development goals to improve our school, community, and work. It is amazing what we have accomplished. In Ms. Heinz's class, we have begun working on all types of life, from dissecting pigs to hatching our own tryouts. Eighth grade also wrote letters to themselves in the future that Ms. Heinz will mail back to them when we are in high school, reminding us to live healthy lifestyles and stay away from drugs and alcohol. Ms. Erica Testament is excited about inclusive co-teaching and evidence-based interventions. In CTE, in Mr. Wisnig, sixth grade students have applied electronics and constructed a working PC motor. We are also learning to code using different gaming platforms. Another fun project we did was construct movable sculptures while learning about kinetic energy. School-wide, we are thankful for our successful fall festivals and Run for Gracie. Run for Gracie was especially meaningful this year as the Williams family wanted to donate all proceeds to Lady Hampton who just received our transplant. And we appreciate the CI program that supports 51 of our students. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak about Piney Creek School.
Good job, Phoebe. Mr. Hall, before y'all present your school improvement plan, I wanna share a little bit of good news myself. I had the opportunity yesterday to go to the state school board meeting and took part of our MTSS team with me, but while we were down there, Ms. Brian Hall presented what we are doing in Allegheny County, and so, and it was, I'm very proud of her, proud of the work that this MTSS team is doing, proud of the work that our teachers are doing, and we are seeing results, and we're still implementing, but we are in tier three, beginning to start tier three, and we've got a lot more professional development to do on that, but our framework, we were just talking about it the other day, how the framework of the MTSS is such a benefit, and the teachers are making it happen, that's what it's all about, but I'm just so proud of Allegheny County Schools and what's going on, but, and before I left, Dr. Maria Petry-Martin, she's the, she's one of the deputy superintendents of the state superintendent, and she grabbed me by the hand and said, "Chet, can y'all come back and present more? We need to hear this type of good news going on down here," so, just, I just wanted to throw that out and let you guys know that we were in Raleigh yesterday, and just very proud of what happened yesterday, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, same thing, Melissa was with me, so, I mean.
And I, again, would just dido on what he said, as I was sitting there, I was very proud to work in for Allegheny County Schools because, I mean, she just, the way she presented what the school system is doing and our ties with the community, it, it was, she did a wonderful job representing us, and, again, just great things happening here, great things.
She always does a good job.
She does a good job, she, I could tell she was a little nervous?
Yeah.
In her voice, you know, but, I mean.
She pulled it off.
She, she did, and she, Allegheny got a lot of good recognition this way, so, I was just, I was just proud to be down, I really wanted to be there to support her, and I'm glad we had some team members that were able to go too, so, it worked out real nice. That being said, Mr. Hall, I'm gonna turn school improvement plan over to you and your staff and let you have the floor.
Okay. I just first want to say thank you for allowing us to come and present our school improvement plan. I wanna thank my staff members for being here tonight, all these wonderful folks here are on the sit team, and this is, you know, it's not just a plan for the principal, it's a total school plan, and it's about them, it's about the kids, and they put a lot of hard work and effort into the things that you're gonna see along with our students when they go through this presentation. I just have a few slides to kick things off. One of our goals is leadership, and that's one we had in there last year, and it's just an overarching goal for our entire school, and that one will run through as long as we're doing the sit plans, that will be a part of it, because it's not just talking about principal, it's talking about teacher leaders, and you can see there, at Piney Creek, I try to employ the distributed leadership model, and we, you see, we have a lot of teams there, and a lot of these folks are on multiple teams because we are so small, so they wear a lot of hats, but, and I'm a member of those teams and I sit in with them, but they lead what's going on in those, it's their leadership that makes us so successful. I'm there to support them, trying to help them in any way possible, put them in contact with, you know, res- And a lot of these folks are on multiple teams because we are so small, so they wear a lot of hats. But, and I'm a member of those teams and I sit in with them, but they lead what's going on in those. It's their leadership that makes us so successful. I'm there to support them, trying to help them in any way possible, put them in contact with resources or people, things like that, but they are leading the charge here on these teams. And they do a fantastic job. I give them all the credit, them and our wonderful students and community. So I just wanted you to see that. It's an overarching goal. The next slide, Ms. Sharon, and this just goes a little more in depth of the shared leadership that we try to employ there at Piney Creek. Over here, you know, is the old-school way where it's a dictatorship or a micromanagement-type style. And this is what we try to employ at Piney Creek. I'm open to ideas. They'll all tell you that. Sometimes I'll throw out an idea and they may come in and sit down with me and we hash it out. And they open my eyes to a better solution, and I'm okay with that. And I believe, as a principal, you should be. You should be open to feedback from your staff. That's where the rubber meets the road, is in the classroom. Good save, Ms. Leslie.
I've never seen you move that quick.
Good save, good save. But you can see here, we do have a shared vision at Piney Creek. And a lot of it is what Phoebe was just talking about. We've started this kindness movement about a little over a year ago. And not only the students, our whole community's bought into it. They're supporting this kindness movement, our blessing box, and many other things that they're going to talk about in just a minute. But I want to thank them again for being here and taking time to come out. I thought it was important that they, you know, speak to the plan because it is their plan and they make it happen in the classroom. So thank you for being able to let us speak, and I'm going to turn it over to the team there.
Okay, so my name is Erica Testerman, and I am the exceptional children's teacher at Piney Creek. This is my first year at Piney Creek and as a teacher. I've worked in Allegheny County as a teacher assistant and a tutor since 2013. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about our academic goal. At Piney Creek, we strive to provide high-quality instruction, including academic and behavior practices. So instruction and supports that are engaging and research-based. So for example, I have Letterland, which is taught K through third. In the middle, I have Number Worlds, which is an evidence-based program that I am doing with my EC students. And then Ms. Phoebe previously mentioned the HLS, the Hill Learning System, is Hill Rap, which the SS team and Turner Meyer is using and I'm using as well in EC. We also strive to have curriculum aligned with standards and expectations. So I have a couple pictures here. I think both of these may be from Kayla Pitts's room of where they have their ICAN statements. And then we have establishment of a positive learning environment. And this is just a couple of examples. Piney Creek has positive posters. We have code posters in the hall. There are just too many pictures to put on there. We also use comprehensive data evaluation systems. So we have done iReady in the fall for all grade levels. And we're getting ready to do iReady again here in the winter so we can compare. And then systematic problem solving. The example of systematic problem solving that Ms. Murphy's going to cover a little bit more, but our PCS in those school students utilize Sustainable Development Goals to solve world problems. And Ms. Murphy's going to explain a little bit more of that. And then we are striving for continued academic growth. Last year, Piney Creek grew by one whole grade letter and exceeded academic growth during the 2017, 2018 school year. So this year, our proficiency goals for 2019 are math 85%, reading 78%, and science 93%.
We started last year developing our PBIS model. As you can see, it stands for Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports. And this is our matrix that we all, our PBS team got together and we developed. And Piney Creek being what it is, is so blessed that behavior is not a true big issue. But we wanted to make it a point to more positive, not consequences of behaviors and stuff, but to reward those that are doing what they're supposed to be doing every day and give them the recognition that they deserve. So we really got on board on this, and that's something that we are really striving to do. So I'm not going to read that to you because it would take us a while. So then, we have been doing something for years. We did when Mr. Wong was there too, with our character education recognition. We have a character trait that we focus on for the month. And then we nominate students that have displayed these character traits and give them a reward at the end of the month. And they recognize other bus drivers, cafeteria ladies, the teachers, resource teachers. They can be nominated for anywhere in the school that this has shown. And the best thing about this is the community is drawn in. Churches in our community in Allegheny County sponsor this. They bring in the food. They come in and serve the kids. And the parents come and are a part of it. And this is something that we are very, very, very happy with and very proud of. And I think it's just something that our whole community gets bound on.
This year, we are a global school. And Glide Creek started it last year. This is our first year in it. So we just started trying to put the pieces together and figure out how we were going to be more global in our classrooms, how we were going to get our students to think outside of Allegheny County. And so, the lady that presented to us in our professional development, she showed us something called Sustainable Development Goals. And it's on the next slide if you don't mind going to it. And so, these are the 17 goals that the participate group has come up with of problems, so to speak, in the world, or things that we can improve on. So you'll notice that poverty is there, which we all know is a worldwide problem. Hunger, equality, peace and justice, things like that, even climate issues. So we, as a staff, participated in this when she presented. And so, we took each of those 17 goals and we paired people that have been addressing those goals. So for instance, there was like a six-year-old girl in Florida that set up a lemonade stand and made $2,000 in a weekend, and she saved some sea turtles with it. And so, we started with Phoebe Murphy, who presented earlier. Phoebe, over the summer, did a service project with her church where she hosted a tea party. And all the proceeds from the tea party went to buying medicine for children that needed it overseas. And so, we made a card for Phoebe and showed that if these people can do this all over the world, then certainly our seventh and eighth graders can do it at Piney Creek School. And so, we challenged them in seventh and eighth grade to pick one thing that they're passionate about. And they all have something that they're totally passionate about that they wanted to address with these standards. So they picked the goal that they wanted, and then they've all started their own projects, some in groups and some individual, where they're going to make a difference in the world. And so, that's how we're going global in middle school. And I'll talk about it other grades in just a minute. But I just want to highlight some of the projects that they're working on because they're doing amazing things. So our biggest one that's coming up quick, and I brought invitations for everybody so you know about it. This is our Nice to Rice Dinner. And this is a group of students. We have Phoebe, Bree, Logan, and Jacob, who all decided they wanted to do our school food drive. And that's something we do every year, but it's never student-based. It's always run by the adults in the school. And so, it's already in place. We already know we're going to do it. But this year, the kids wanted to take it over. And so, they're counting with cans every day. They're keeping them in stock. They're making sure that they get them all turned in. And then a seventh grader wanted to have a soup dinner, Elliot Church, and he, which is Ms. Bree's son and Mr. Hudson. And so, he decided that he wanted to have that drive or that dinner so that we could bring in more canned food. So instead of charging admission, we're charging food for you to come eat the dinner, which is going to be super sweet. And so, that's on December 14th, and I hope to see you on there, and I'll pass these out in just a moment. And so, that's just one way. He's putting together the whole dinner. He's organizing the decorations, the food, the people that are donating the soup and the desserts. And so, it's going to make such a huge difference in our community, but it's also going to help outside of our community. So Bree Price wanted her food drive to help the hospitality house in Boone because that was something that was near to her heart, and she volunteered there. So we're taking part of the food for our community, part of it will go in the blessing box, part of it will be picked up by families for Christmas so they can eat Christmas dinner. And then what's left will be split between the Solid Rock Food Closet in town and the Boone Hospitality House. So that's a huge outreach, just with one dinner. Also at that dinner, we have two young men who wanted to raise money for a church that needs a whale. And so, they're going to do, all the drinks that night are going to be purchased. All that money will go to them. And then we have little Liddy. Carol is in eighth grade, and Lydia's her niece. And so, she wanted to raise money so that she could buy Christmas presents for all the little babies on Liddy's hall. And so, Carol has written a letter and reached out to churches. And so, they're going to do a bake drive that night with Zoe Gannon and Kylie Weddington, who's here. And all the bake drive sales will go to making Christmas baskets for the babies. So that's what she was passionate about because that's where Lydia is and that's who she wanted to help. We're also going to have a community garden, like I said earlier. So that's going to be a really neat project that will start in the spring. And then one of our students in eighth grade wanted to work on mental health for our county. And so, we threw around lots of ideas about starting groups or doing different things. And she decided she would just like to have contact numbers. So she's going to make a brochure for the county that has all the outreach numbers of anything that you would need for mental health purposes. So who to call or what, you know, hotlines and things like that. So those were some projects. And then, if you'll go to the next slide, this is our Christmas ornament project. And this was Connor Hampton and Carson Behr. And the Sparta Revitalization Committee contacted us and they said, "We have some ornaments. Would you guys like to do this?" And so, everybody was so excited, and we had grade levels participate. And then we had individual students that wanted to make their own, and they're all three out of town. So when they come to town, they get to see their ornaments, and it's a really neat thing that they did that and they were a part of Christmas in Sparta because it's been successful this year. With the Start with Hello campaign, we found this video online, and it was this really neat teacher. And she came up with this, and I stole it. But our kids made this from what she did. And so, there's a video of how they come in every morning. And so, they come in and they tag what they want. So if they want a fist bump or a hug, or they want to dance, and they just touch it as they're coming in the room, and we have a little good morning celebration. You can play the video if you want to. But it's just a way for us to start with a hello. So we recognize that, you know, we're glad to see them in the morning. And then it took us a while to get a handshake sent out. We have to say that louder when you do it. So lots of them enjoy just getting a hug in the morning. And one thing that I noticed changing from elementary to middle school is that they're not as huggy as little kids and they're just kind of hugged. And so, when I put that on there, and they really do want hugs. They just don't want to tell you. And so, it's made my day so much better, just having them do that.
It makes hugs cool.
Yeah. I thought they would, we even put her, I'd rather not because I was like, they're going to be so cool, they're not going to want to do this. But not one kid has touched, I'd rather not. So they're having fun in the mornings, and we get to welcome them in. So we offer that throughout the school too. On World Kindness Day, Courtney and Scarlett kind of took over the school. And we had these posters up that said, "November 13th is coming." And count down to November 13th, and everybody's like, "What is that? What is November 13th?" And everybody was mad they didn't know. But these two middle schoolers knew. And so, we started the day with muffins and chapstick, and it said, "You're the bomb." And then it had the muffins to do and appreciate you. And then throughout the day, we put in surprises for the teachers in the lounge. And all the kids got a handwritten note. So we are a small school, and that's a super blessing because Scarlett and Courtney wrote 181 notes to all the kids in the school. And so, every kid got their own little note. And it was like this super day because it was World Kindness Day, and that's our wonder unit that we've loved. This project hasn't happened yet, but it's going to next week. And so, we're going to redo the bathroom. We're going to put positive quotes in there. It was supposed to be a surprise, sorry. And so, Megan and Madison are going to repaint the top of the bathroom. And then we've got decals that are going to go on the stalls. So we're going to start with the girls. We might move to the boys if we're successful, if they, you know, they care, but they may not. I talked about Isabella a little bit. Isabella wants to be in the military. And so, her passion was the military and what she could do to support them. So she has put together these baskets. This is everything that's in it, the seeds and the candy and the chapstick. And so, she has enough funds to right now support over 40 soldiers. So we're going to send over 40 soldiers, packages for Christmas. So you can definitely tell that they're going global. Like, they're thinking so far outside of Sparta, and they're trying so hard to branch out. This is Zoe and Kylie. They actually wanted to do two projects because one of them couldn't happen right now. So this is going to happen after Christmas, but this is a read-a-thon. And it's for Heifer International, which is an international company, where they're going to actually buy livestock for these little villages that need it. And then they take it and they multiply and do such cool things. And that's Zoe Born, who created those. They're like handmade, but she stuffed them and then she ties them with the material. And so, she's going to deliver those to the nursing home in Sparta. So that was pretty neat that she could do that handmade because I couldn't do that. So she took that on. And then on the next slide, I think, is our Liddy slide. So Liddy has just really inspired us, and we've tried so hard. We had a dance. We did our Run for Gracie proceeds went to her. We had a yard sale where we raised like $2,500 with the Beta Club kids. So we're up to almost $4,000, or it's $4,097 that we have been able to give to Liddy. Because Cheyenne was one of ours, you know? And she was one of the high schools, but she started at Piney. And so, it's so important that we're able to support her. And Carol, like I said, is her angel, so it's really important to Carol. So Carol's doing the gift baskets, and in each gift basket, Lakin, she really hand-stitched them and then tied them too. So she made these blankets that'll go in each basket that'll be given to the babies on that floor. So that was pretty neat. So that's, again, that's going all the way to Charlotte, which is branching out from our little town, so. And then K3 goes global in a totally different way. They do Christmas around the world, which is such a neat thing because they bring in the food from the country. They bring in music and art, food, anything that they can research and tell you about. So each classroom, kindergarten has a country, first grade, second grade, and third grade. And then each day, they rotate through those so that they can learn about new cultures and they can read new things. So K3 really does a great job of going global too. So that's a huge initiative. That's why we put it in our SIT plan because we know it's going to improve our school and improve the kids' grasp of everything global. So it's been really great.
Okay, so our fifth goal, I'll pull her up here. Originally, it was a STEM goal. So STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. But recently, they've included art, and we have an amazing art teacher. So she's doing like fantastic things with the younger ones, and we're trying to do great things with the middle school students. So we're really focusing on our STEM. And why would she do this? It's because it teaches 21st century skills. It is very hands-on. It makes the kids kind of go beyond like a worksheet. They get actively involved in the class. And I've got some pictures showing some of the stuff that we've done this year and in the past. In order for the US to remain a world leader, we have to compete globally with other countries. And we really want to make sure our kids are, sorry about that, the STEM groups of kids. So in May 2015, there were 8.6 million STEM jobs in the US. And they are the fastest-growing jobs in the world right now. 93% of STEM jobs have salaries above the national average. So whenever you talk to students about what jobs they want, the salary is usually tied into that because they want to make money. And STEAM jobs are increasing on average to about 28% in the country. So this was the lab that I did with seventh grade this year on friction. And I love the students split over here because they were arguing over who was right and she was wrong. She was not happy to do her number that one. But what's a great thing about it is that these kids will start discussing things with each other. And you just don't get that normally in a group of middle schoolers. So what they did, they had to design their own experiment to figure out which type of material would create the most friction. So we were talking about, you know, if we had to do roadways or if we had to slow things down or if we had to do something for the gym floor. So we got to talk all about how we could apply what we were doing. This is probably their favorite one of the year. And we are a very small school, and you can smell this up and down the hallway. So people probably don't like this too much that this is happening. But I mean, I have like third and fourth graders coming up to me saying, "How can we do that?" So it's really exciting when you have little kids who are looking forward to your class. I've also had students before that were freaking out on me just a little bit. And they didn't want to do it, but then they got in there and they decided they want to be a doctor. They want to be a biologist or a forensic scientist. So it's really awesome to be able to give them an opportunity to see internal structures that mostly they're going to like read about in a book or see online. It's just so much better to let them get in there and see the different structures. We also look at plant versus animal cells because I think it's really important for students to be able to use the microscopes and use all the equipment, especially if they're going to go to college and have a STEAM career. So, that's right, nope, you're fine. So again, this is like usually the first time they get to use a microscope. And we have some really nice equipment and an awesome science lab. And working with Mr. Bogler right now, we're going to work on getting our school to be STEAM certified. STEAM certified. So it's gonna take a lot of work, but I think that Piney Creek can absolutely accomplish that goal. And so talking about the art, we try to include that too, again, because it gives the kids an opportunity to be creative. Um, and so the, these two particular ones, we were talking about Cell City. So they study the organelles in a cell and then they have to create a city with an analogy that goes with all of the different types. So um, this is Connor Hampton's and he did a bee hive. So we talk about the nucleus, which we say is the brain of a cell, it has all the information. He made the queen bee the nucleus and then like the end of the plasma reticulum is what kind of transfers things around the cells. And he made it like a honey truck, but takes everything around. Um, Elliot Church actually did the one on the left and he did Cell City compared to like an Indian village. So he kind of pulled in some of that history that he learns in social studies and kind of incorporates that. All right, this is another lab with speed, um, which is distance, but in time, um, my room was kind of chaos on some of these days, it was like organized chaos. So again, they designed something, tried to figure out um, which object had the fastest speed. Another um, little bit of art project that we did and it just completely baffles me how talented our kids are. I mean, they are artists and they're scientists and they're kindness, they just have everything kind of wrapped in one. Um, so we did ecosystems and they had to pick an ecosystem in North Carolina and at least have five flora and five fauna and then write out the niches and the limiting factors and carrying capacity and they just did a phenomenal job with it. Um, this is what we're working on right now. We are hatching triops, because we talked about evolutionary theory. Um, so it's a little three-eyed creature. Um, so we started hashing them out on Friday and now we're kind of scared, because it's gonna snow and I'm gonna have to drive in two feet to go. But we're gonna make it happen, like I will get there one way or another. Um, so they're, you know, really excited, they don't live very long, so I don't have to send them home to their parents and they have to like raise a pair or anything. But it does kind of let us go back and look at it, because it's like a living fossil, because they haven't evolved at all since the Triassic period, so we kind of get like a look back into history. So that's what we're currently trying to hatch them out. Um, I do try to put as much hands-on stuff in math as I do in science. And this is our Barbie bungee. Um, so again, we get some strange looks sometimes around the school, but we predict how many rubber bands it will take to drop the Barbie off of the top part of our basketball um, goal outside, or the court outside. Um, so it's, it's kind of bizarre how many middle school students wanna make her hit her head, but you know, it's kind of like you have to save her the first time and then if you wanna drop her off, we'll see what happens from there. So they really get into this project and you know, um, again, enjoy math, which is, you know, hard to do for a middle school student sometime. Um, another thing we do is we try to make sure that we apply the math and science to things in real life. So we have um, a scenario where there are two different um, ambulance companies. And there's an accident at a, at an amusement park and um, the ambulance doesn't get there fast enough and so they have to take the data from both of the ambulance companies and determine who they should call when. So they're looking at dates, they're looking at times of the day, they're looking at days of the month. And so they have to determine and um, to separate that data in order to prove to me and have like a nice little speech with that too, which company we should call when. And this is um, Ms. Madison Story, who's just doing a fantastic job in science, so she's getting them ready for me in fifth and sixth grade. And this is an example of a food web that she did in her group, um, to kind of teach them that it's not, it's not really a chain, we're all interconnected to everything there. Now I'll turn it over to our art teacher.
Yeah, I'm the art teacher librarian and sort of uh, doing K5 STEM, so uh, when we're calling it makers. Um, but anyway, you can see we have several little things that we use across the top there. Um, this is, we kind of start off, first of the day, elementary children, you know, once they finish their breakfast can come in the library and just make. And they make all kinds of crazy things and I just pull, they, they have a cabinet that they know where to go and they pull things out and they make them and, and it's lots of fun, especially for the little ones. They, you know, make lots of little lawn mowers with kinetics and yeah, but they've done some neat projects. Um, and first and second grade, one of the things we do during their makers' times is they'll have a task that they have to do. And this is an example of a task they might have to do in their cooperative groups, using different materials, all kinds of whatever materials they wanna use, to build a standing structure a foot tall. So they're, you know, getting their little rulers out and we said, "He's really hard thinking there." You know, this guy's super proud, his is really tall. So, but anyway, so they are, uh, you know, they're doing lots of fun things like that. So we have, I have several, every day it's something different. Uh, and here, um, we have some younger ones and then we have some older ones, some fourth graders, that are learning to make uh, circuits using little bits. Little bits is a, you know, it's a little gadget out there where you can take these pieces and put them together and make a circuit. And they're, they're really fun and we've uh, we've been able to, you know, purchase a couple of them through our, our book fair proceeds. Uh, we're kind of at the mercy of what we get by whatever the Scholastic Book Fair catalog has in it. So, uh, but we, we've gotten a few of these things and we're really enjoying using them. The kids love them and they're super kid-friendly and it really reinforces, you know, like a circuit and how you make things work and that there are steps you have to follow. So, so that's been really good for all ages, you know? There's some more intricate kits, uh, you know, like these girls over here, they've got a synthesizer that they're making where they can make all this noise and everything and it's really fun and to hear it all day. But, but it's really good. Uh, here, um, one of the little tasks that some friends here, you know, they're using these magnet tiles and building a structure that they had to light it up. So they use their, their little bits, kits and things to, to, to make it do something, you know, to make something do something. So, uh, not just building a structure, but actually having it light up. So we're getting there. And this is a fifth grader's been working with Makey Makey, which if you've never seen a Makey Makey, it is amazing. It's uh, these uh, students at MIT developed this and now they're just everywhere. And what you do is you could hook them up to your computer and then like here, the wires are all hooking up to things and to hook it up to this fat clay, sorry, did I touch that? And I'm sorry, but then, and this is, this is the programmer, this is the, where it happens. You hook it to the computer, hook it to those, and then you hook it to the clay or you can hook it to bananas or all kinds of just anything. And you tap it and when you pull up the piano program on the computer, you're playing the piano with the sound. And it's just loads of fun, kids really love it. Um, so, and then here's a little of the A in our scheme, a little art, uh, and it's printmaking. And so we during our, we did a, a school-wide unit on um, Egypt. We were studying about Egypt and the history of Egypt and through, through media, we're doing research and through, you know, art, we're doing art and through makers, we were making different things like pyramids and that stuff. But um, these are prints that they made, the, and this was fifth grade that did these. And so that was one of their projects. We had different projects, we reached great little bit. They're beautiful and they're so easy too, so.
But anyway, she's downplaying how hard she works in the book fair. Like this year I came in and she was dressed as a unicorn. It was scary. The kids motivated to come in and actually spend some money. Um, and so we, you know, she just works really, really hard to get the art projects going. Um, and then Mr. Hall, like the seventh graders last year enjoyed dissecting kids so much that they begged to do sharks this year. So during the summer, I thought I was gonna have to buy them for money, so I was like, "I want sharks." And he was like, "Okay." It's really nice when you know you have somebody that will give you the money, but know that may not be there all the time.
Wow, wonderful.
This is our last uh, goal and we debated a lot on how many goals we were gonna put in and we felt like six was too many, but we felt like we already had a handle on some of them, so we thought we could really conquer them and branch out. And so parent involvement and communication is one that we've worked on for the last two or three years really hard, because it's really difficult to get parents' information if they don't have one outlet or the other. If they're not gonna check Facebook, you know, then maybe the call would get them. If they're not gonna answer the call, then maybe we need something else to, to make sure that we're getting information out, to make sure that they know what's going on and, and you all know how hard it is to communicate with, with so, such a large group of people. So we do use Facebook, we do use Twitter, Mr. Hall is, is a Twitter pro and we don't, he, he takes care of Twitter. Um, one thing in our classrooms that we love is the Remind app. And so we have all these Remind groups within our school for PTO for each of our classrooms, for like our Beta Club kids and parents, we can put them in one group and send out just to those. So it doesn't have to be an email every time, it could just be an app on their phone where they get a notification and then they have the information that you need them to have. Um, in the lower grades, they send out weekly, Kayla does a weekly slides and she tells them all the parents what's going on in the classroom, how she's meeting standards, um, she's really good with her newsletters. So we try very hard. Um, and then I think the connected or the blackboard calls are really important, but I just don't always think that, that, you know, it's, it's really easy to hit ignore on there sometimes. Um, so I think it has to be multifaceted. And so I think we're just trying really hard to find new ways or different ways or hit all the different options so that we can make sure that our parents are involved and make sure that they know all these great things that are going on. And so that we left that goal in there, we felt it was really, really important, even though we've been working on it, we just wanna continue to find great ways to, to communicate and make it better, so.
I just wanna, I, I just wanna say thank you, because I'm all excited and I just wanna come get a hug from everybody. All the wonderful things you're doing out there with the community is just, that's, that is fantastic. And our students, because that's just gonna go on through their whole lives, all those things that you're teaching them. That's fantastic, thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Hall and Ms. Plant? Thank y'all for coming to share with us tonight. Before we, before I finish up my report and we, we vote on this, because we need, we do need to vote on their school approval plan so we can present it. Uh, I would like my leadership team to introduce yourself to Ms. Ray and tell her your position and, and what you do here in the central office. So I'll start with you, Ms. Holder.
I'm Cindy Holder and I'm the Director of Finance. We just try to do whatever we can with the funds we have to, best, best use of those funds to benefit our kids.
Ms. Weaver, I am the K5 Curriculum Director, Pre-K Director. I work with the BTEs, that's a new change.
I'm Melissa Fitzgerald, I'm the exceptional children's program director and student services director.
Fred Law, Social Superintendent, HR Maintenance, Safe Schools.
Leslie Clark, Chief Technology Officer, Director of Accountability.
Matra.
Yes, sir.
Keith Bogler, 612 Curriculum and 61th Grade.
And last but not least, lady keeps me straight. My administrative assistant, out, Sharon.
I'm Sharon Lyons and he's assistant and you're also assistant. You're all CEUs and.
And, and while we're speaking of the CEUs, um, are, are you gonna set up the board training 101 for them?
So I'll work with them.
Okay, because there's some vates for that. And um, also, speaking of the, I would, I would like, I really would like to do a, maybe a board retreat on a Saturday with the new board and share some things, as we've done tonight, about what we're doing. And where they have goals, our leadership team, uh, I'd like to tell you kind of what they're doing and their goals and professional development that we're doing and some things I have in mind moving forward that I'd like to share with you. And so, would that be a?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Um, do y'all wanna try to set a date or do you, while we're here right now? Is that a possibility?
Are you looking like January, February?
I was thinking, I was thinking maybe near the end of January, possibly.
Okay.
If that's possible.
Now, but the school board 101, they need to have that by what they?
It's Ja, it's January, I got an email the other day, I don't know the exact date, I wanna say January the 12th maybe or 13th, maybe the 12th. But you know, we also, um, when Fred was out, was back, we, we did have Ally come up and do that training. Uh, I thought she did a wonderful job. Uh, that basically, she covers basically what's in Board 101 and I think that was, that could substitute for that instead of having to drive to Raleigh to do that class. So if you'd like for me to get that lined up, I'll do that still, so. But I don't want, I don't, I do not wanna do that with a retreat. I, I wanna, I wanna bring my, my leadership team in and uh, and maybe, maybe do a half day, maybe a little bit more, but, okay. Alright, so.
There's like the 26th, that'd be the last weekend, Saturday and.
Could we do, could we do the, uh, could we do either the 19th? Would that be possible? January the 19th?
That's fine.
Have a, have a retreat? What time would you guys like to start?
Doesn't matter to me.
Eight o'clock?
Cows are up.
Well, we could, uh, we could have maybe a little breakfast, start eight o'clock and maybe be finished up by 12, just do a half a day.
That's good.
Board retreat, okay? And if we get done before that, we'll, we'll be done, so. January the 19th? Yeah, I'll bring breakfast, that's what I do, is breakfast. You gonna do breakfast? I'll do breakfast.
Really?
Biscuit and gravy?
All right.
And bacon? We'll have all that. We'll have all that. We'll have all that, so. Yeah, I would, yeah, I had told everybody, I mean, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it before then, but uh, and then uh, what I'll, what I'll do, I'll get Sharon, Sharon will, we can do, we can do the board 101 where we can, if we wanna bring Ally back in.
I think you're gonna bring Ally back in, I think you get more out of that.
Okay.
Or I did.
I think it'd be easier for you.
I think it would be too.
To do that.
Yeah. So Sharon, we'll call Ally tomorrow, I'll get a date and we'll get the date to you. Or I'll get a couple of dates that will work for you later, okay? And, and we'll, we'll do it, we'll do it just as soon as we can, so.
I think, can Sharon be looking at um, some of the webinars that we did last year to get our credits to? I think it started like in January?
It usually starts about the third or fourth week in January too, so. Yeah, we'll, and we can have, we can have those dates at the retreat and go over that and get that too. Is there anything else that you would like that day? If you, if you think of anything, call me, call Sharon and, and we'll put it on, we'll put it on the retreat that day, okay? I just thought it'd be a good, good chance, since we got a couple of new folks coming in, that we could uh, just kind of tell you about our future and where we're headed and what, what it looks like and, you know, uh, of course you've heard about what's going on with the global at Piney and, and, and the global piece that's going on at uh, at the Lake Creek and actually tomorrow, we're going to, we're actually going to go visit a school that's doing the leader in me and that's the thought I have at, at Sparta, so. So I wanna share all that information with you too, so. Okay, alright. Alright, that ends, that ends my report, Ms. Chairman. Um, and we have taken care of these, so we're at new business, so we need to motion their school approval plan.
I'm sorry, I've sat here eight years and watched Brad do it and then I'm sitting here going, "What's next?"
I'll make a motion.
I ain't gotta say it. Okay, so we need to approve the school approval for Piney Creek School. So can I have a motion?
Submove.
Second.
In all favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the old business, which would be the final reading for the...